All right.
Well, this regular council meeting of October third, twenty twenty two.
United States.
Roll call, please.
Mayor Loughlin.
You.
Councilperson Sexton.
Here.
Dean.
Here.
Good Wyler.
Here.
Goldman.
Here.
Miller absent.
All right, um, I need a motion to approve tonight's agenda. Move seconds. Um. Favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're gonna start tonight's meeting. Oh, I'm sorry, the consent agenda. Consists of the approval of the minutes of the September nineteenth council meeting. The claims for October third, July financial report and an amended first report. Of June twenty twenty two, motion please. Second from uh. John. Uh, any discussion on the consent agenda? There are none, well, go ahead to vote.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goldman.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Good Wyler.
Okay, tonight, um, first of all, we have a presentation open forum. If anyone is here, we'd like to address the council. We'd love to hear what you have to say. We cannot take action and have limited discussions, so I have uh. Sam Becker. Go Sam. Um, go ahead, Sam. We all got your email a few days ago. So studied what I think we want to talk about.
So my name's Sam. Uh, I live at six thirteen Prairie View Drive. And here today talk about drainage easements in my neighborhood. I'm joined today by my wife Jenny and some of our neighbors and the rest in spirit who couldn't be here tonight. Uh, my family recently moved to another location in West Branch. Uh, we looked for a suitable house, one with more room to grow and make our own. Uh, we decided to check out new houses by D R Horton. Uh, we fell in love with the neighborhood, found a house with a big backyard. Joe Horton did not say anything to us about drainage easements. They were sure to point out the property lines though. Uh, but no mention of any easements. So without knowing that important information, we're very excited about the potential for our new place and we bought the house. Uh, last week we were notified that we do have an easement, which uh. You can see on drawing, um, our neighbors to the west and south have actually larger ones than we do. Uh, some of them now realize they hardly have a backyard at all. Uh, the final plot map was never disclosed to us during our closing nor ever mentioned. Um, I know that these are legal documents created uh for this area before the houses even start going up. Uh, you guys did what you needed to do, uh, but I ask that you be a little more transparent and mindful at least of communication with the builders and the realtors. So they understand these restrictions and do not sell properties based on false pretenses. Uh, you claim that we all should know this information or that we should all have thought of it ahead of time. Well, many people don't know what a drainage easement is even is or did. Uh, and unless they are given that information in the buying process, it feels like they are being taken advantage of. I understand you want to grow and build these new houses, but unless the builders and realtors know about these restrictions, it's gonna continue being a problem. Nobody's gonna think about an easement being that big of a deal breaker when trying to maintain a job, family and just moving in all at the same time. Not to mention being told in the buying process they can do what they that they can do what they want to the property lines. This was probably based on the fact that a lot of our neighbors already had fences up in the drainage easement permitted and approved by the city. So unfortunately, there was a precedent set and that's kind of why we're in this situation. There are all different kinds of people with different backgrounds that moved in this neighborhood and most of them will say that they were told the same thing to the property line. We may not have bought this particular property if we had known about this at the time, you know, about these restrictions. Many of my neighbors have actually said the same thing. So in the future, consider plots with maybe more usable yard space. So there's room not only for the easement, but also for families to to grow and and make the yard their own. You know, pushing to build and fill these houses, knowing full well that the new owners can only look at their yard and still expect them to maintain it is not the right approach. We want to be part of this growing community. It's hard to feel welcome when deceived and finding ourselves in the fight we didn't ask for. Thank you.
Which lot, which lot?
Yeah, which one, fifteen or sixteen?
Seventeen.
Alls I have to say is I'm disappointed in. The realtor, the D R Horton, that we're not explaining.
A lot more than me too. It's it's everybody.
Well, and they claim to not have known about things.
No.
D R Horton.
That's.
They bought the property that they had.
I mean, I even emailed them and asked them.
Yeah, they they're a national builder. They know better. But that's. So. It's selling out.
Yeah. Anyway, we're glad to have you in town. Hope to stay.
Stay. I got it. I got all the stuff now, you know, turn it all off. I I know all the rules, but. Thing is, we're the right thing to do, but.
Okay, anybody, anything else?
But I did kind of walk up and look at this this whole back easement. And it's too bad that um. I would say probably half of these lots. There's an easement in there. It's drainage only for the upper lots, which are the ones on the west side. Because um, like you said, that. Water all runs downhill, but it'll never get to your house and that's that's too bad, but um fence easements. Um, fence fences in an easement, you know, yeah. All grasses get cut down, water runs down, they end up blocking it up. It ends up diverting the water. That's that's unfortunate.
Um, after your email, I I thought the only thing recourse there could be is is an engineer, the neighbors wanted to hire an engineer to. To get rid of that drainage easement? I don't know if that's possible.
I would.
I don't know if we would have proved that. Well.
You'd have to get every property owner's agreement.
Yeah.
And you're talking even your neighbors up up north would probably, that would be my guess.
Well, that'd be a lot of work. Yeah. That easement to get rid of. I don't know if that's possible, but just a thought that ran through my head. Okay.
So is the only problem with the fencing, is it just that it catches like grass and debris that kind of flows into the yard?
It doesn't catch grass and weeds. We've seen it happen. Most severe cases is corn stalks, but you know.
And is that due to negligence on cleaning or is that due to?
A heavy, heavy rain will, you know, it'll fill up and the next thing you know, that water's backed up into the neighbors upstream. Basement or the window well.
So it's not like something that you could essentially put on the homeowners to ins- ensure that their fences are clean? Just like.
Well, here, the city's not gonna take that stand.
Yeah, well, what we've found in the past that it. That somebody won't do that and then then they the people that it affects come to the city because it's our fault that somebody else didn't clean the thing.
Yeah, we just, we we didn't yell that before. A whole other issue. Why are you running in the back of that? You will, then you sell your house. You're invited to home. There's no interest. And then you run into one of those. All right, well, thanks for bringing it up to us. I mean, I just appreciate that.
Figure that'd be good to know what's going on. Yeah, it's unfortunate that they. They didn't let you know that there are easements on your property.
So would there ever be like a consideration for like a free strike policy? Like or like a. You know, like if if maybe they're having issues and somebody you go and you talk to them, you're like, hey, you have to do this, otherwise you're gonna have to take it down. Kind of thing, or is this just not?
No, we're not gonna get in a free strike. There's no way. That that's what I'm gonna start with.
Would there be any way to go back to D V Horton and ask for the topsoil to go on on that hill?
Yeah, because they stripped everything away. Yeah. There's no topsoil over it.
Yeah, right now we have soggy messes in the background. It's just like, you know, everything's washing out.
I know they store that dirt on the other side, black dirt. On the to the to the west.
Oh, I think some.
I doubt it. I doubt they would comply, but.
I can't imagine they would.
I mean, ask tonight is just. From our perspective, having the city help hold them accountable so that the buyers don't want it as well. Uh, because the fact that they did not disclose this, we've looked through our documents, there is no disclosure about it. The fact that they did not disclose it to us or to other provincial buyers. They need to be held accountable for it. And as a neighborhood, we've talked about what we might do, but we'd like the city's help and make sure it's held accountable.
Yeah, the only thing I was ever told, I didn't wasn't that told about the easement. Per se, but I was told about, I have the manhole cover in my home. And I was told that they would just, city would just need access whenever they.
Which lot are you?
Six oh one.
Lot number, I don't have.
Six oh one, Prairie View.
It's 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 a lot number.
Oh.
Your other.
Oh. So down at the bottom of the hill, that was the only thing that they said is the manhole was needing to be accessed.
Yeah, that's in a public utility. Should be well within that. Once again, yeah, you can't have a fence over that. All right, um. Think we'll move on. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, anybody else? Yeah, go ahead.
I mean, I came here for another. I just thought of something else. Are you Steve?
Oh, yeah.
Please bring up, um, my name is.
Name for the record, please.
My name is Steve Dole, D O L E. Get my picture in a paper. I just moved here in May. I live on Fourth Street. I don't know what the lot number is, one twenty one North Fourth Street. It's about the from Main Street, it's fourth house up. Two more houses on beyond. Anyway, um, garage is in the back, access by the alley. Um, I assume the alley is the city's. Property, uh, responsibility, et cetera. Um, I can see. Not having been here for a winter, but knowing what, but growing up in Iowa and knowing what the winters are like. Um, it's gonna be kind of difficult to get in and out of there. The whole thing just slopes down to the south. It'd be easy to come in from Green Street to get to my garage. Even with ice and snow, but getting out. It's not gonna happen unless I go south towards Main Street. And there is the, of course, the big drop off at the cliff. I went over that once. And I'll never know better than to ever do that again. Can there be something done about that? I mean, it'd be great to have the whole alleyway paved and uh graded properly, but perhaps that's a little too much to ask. But if we could do something about that cliff. On the main street.
It's easier to pave at that that. No, because the sidewalk is up here in the street down here. And.
Well, I'm not a.
Ramp has to make up that difference. I just. And it's.
I mean, you're gonna, you're gonna, you're gonna tell me it's much too complicated or uh expensive or what?
We, yeah, we've talked about it through the years, minimum paving the alley and it's, we've always turned it down. Um, talked about closing that out.
That end.
And that's at that end.
What do I do with my garage?
No, that end.
Oh, closing that end.
You'd have to go uphill in the wintertime and and I don't know, we know plow alleys.
I believe I saw you.
Do you plow that alley or not? You do.
It's last. Do we really? Okay, last. It's last. Yeah.
Want to get around to it, right?
Yeah, well, we're better than Iowa City now.
Anyway, I wanted to make my voice heard on that. Um, I'm not at all happy about that. Thing. I mean, I know the garbage trucks come in and back out. I had something delivered to my house by a panel truck and I had to instruct him, you better back out.
Oh.
Didn't like that, but. I think he drove down and took a look and see if he could get out that way and ended up backing up. So anyway, that's my uh two cents worth on it. Um.
All right, Steve.
What I what I made it, you know, I think it's already been brought up in the past by uh previous owners. What's the name? Chelsea, Kevin Gero.
Hillary. They've all brought it up.
Yeah, so.
Yeah, thank you. Okay, we'll move on to the public hearing. Um, we have a public hearing. Is now open. On a proposal to rezone one lot located on Fourth Street. From R one to R two residential. Does anyone here want to address? Address hearing none, I will gavel the public hearing closed. And we will go into the first reading of such. Rezoning of ordinance seven ninety seven. Rezoning certain parcel of real property located at one fifty four Ort Street. From R one residential district to R two residential district. Um, motion please.
Move.
Second, anyone?
Second.
Okay. Any comments? This is a request by the owner themselves.
So I have a question. If this goes, this goes to argue. How big of a garage can go on the back of the lot?
Just be attached to the house.
It still does even though it's. Or do.
You can't. You can't build a garage on a parcel without having a primary structure. What they want to do is potentially have this lot zoned R two so that they could combine the two lots so that. Whether it's attached or detached, it can still be detached, but it can't be larger than their principal structure.
What's asking to be rezoned is the existing house.
Yes.
Not just the one.
Single family house that's already there.
So just the one lot.
Not the vacant lot.
It has to, you know.
The existing house is is R one now. They want to rezone to R two.
Just so they match.
Oh.
Two.
And those two parcels are zoned two different. So one way or another, we have to rezone. Um, in terms of making them one parcel. We can't, we can't have two different zone parcels under one parcel. So no matter which way we went, it have to be rezoned one way or another. If you go to the south, there are two. If you go to the north in that neighborhood, there are one. So really it comes down that on staff's opinion, it comes down that just perspective and what they want to do, but it's. R one and R two in that neighborhood. So it's not gonna change character of the neighborhood.
Well, I get that.
It's just to make his life easier for to to combine the parcels.
So in other words, you're just putting the line down the middle. Making it through lots.
Removing it.
Removing the line.
Ultimately removed.
Making.
Oh, you're removing.
Making two squares, a rectangle. So that they can do something with that rectangle. That's easy to describe.
This way they could actually build a mother in law out. Attached to the existing house or something like that. Someone wanted to.
When doing this, could they ever put another existing house on that? So this.
At this time, no.
No.
At this time, no. Not ours, current zoning code rate is. It won't be, it'd be considered one lot. They can build a, yeah, it's gonna be considered one lot. That's if they intend, if they, if they do. If they dissolve the line and make it the two lots one, that's that's something they would have to do on their own. The city would have to approve it, saying they're not making a subdivision. Um, it goes through all those same kind of rules. Um, and then, but what this allows is if they want to add on to. Build on that, they say that former property line, they can build another garage or they can build a garage as long as it's not larger than their principal structure. Because they still have to follow the same rules under chapter one sixty five for accessory structures. So they still have to follow the rules of the zoning code. They're just wanting to be able to do something with that land. They don't want to build a house on it. They just want to improve what they have.
And this could be easy.
Yes.
And they have proved it.
This has been done in other areas. Um, uh, there was a house over on.
I think among that or what?
Uh, yeah, it's been done before when there's a lot, when some people don't want a neighbor and that's what some people have done in on Ort Street. They bought the lot next to them because they don't want a neighbor. They just want an extra big yard. In this case, they actually want to do something, possibly expand. And they own both lots, so. They're just more restricted by keeping it a single lot.
Okay, um, we have a, this is our first reading. Any other comments, questions?
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton. Goldman.
Yes.
Good Wyler.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have a public hearing on a proposal to rezone. Uh, various parcels in an area. Bounded by North Second Street, East College Street, East Main Street and North Fourth Street. One here to speak in regards to this particular rezoning. Of, I thought it was just one particular lot. No, it's two parcels.
One parcel we own.
Yeah, one parcel owned by the city and one parcel owned by another. Hearing no comments from the public. I'll close the public hearing. Did I miss someone who wanted to chat to the council for the public hearing? I think that is no. Okay, so we'll move on to uh the first reading of ordinance. Seven ninety eight, rezoning certain parcel of real property located. North of East Main Street. And west of North Fourth Street. From R three residential district to a planned unit development district. Um, motion please.
Move.
So this will enable the developer to. Do what you would like him to do. Yep, anybody else? Hey, Leslie, go ahead.
Council, uh, councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Good Wyler.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yeah.
Goldman.
Yes.
Right, one more public hearing is now open in regarding to an amendment to the historic preservation ordinance. Anyone here who would like to in regards to historic preservation ordinance? We will read next. Hearing none, I'll close the public hearing. And move on to the first reading of ordinance seven ninety nine. Establishing a historic preservation commission for the city of West Branch, providing for the recognition. And promotion of historic sites and defining powers and duties of the commission. Motion please. Okay. So this sets up a committee. Mayor and a councilperson. And. Couple others, can't really, we are, you know. Um, sets up travelers' rest as an historic. District, I believe. So far, so and so forth. Any other? Questions, comments?
I think the biggest thing just to reiterate is, for the most part, the historic preservation chapter is staying the same. I think the biggest thing that needs to be reiterated, really the only thing that's changing is we're hoping to preserve. Um, James Townsend's Traveler's Rest, which was a um stop on the Underground Railroad. So it's one more thing that the city of West Branch can hopefully add to its historical heritage. Property owner is willing, has signed off on paper that they want their home to be preserved. A national registry does not preserve or protect the home unless you're getting federal funding. In this case, this home does not have federal funding. So if this homeowner were to pass or sell the home. The next property owner could do as they wish with it, but with this ordinance, it would prevent. Somebody from demolishing the house, from severely altering it or moving it off site, which has been offered to the property owner in the past.
Um, okay, thank you, Adam. Uh, any other comments, questions? Let's go ahead and vote, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Good Wyler.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yeah.
Goldman.
Yes.
All right, um, police officer time. Um, resolution twenty two eighty six, entering into an officer training reimbursement agreement. With Lucas Moore. Motion please.
I move.
Okay, so this sets up. Rules and parameters of. This leaves us early. For years. Anything else, anyone? Go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Good Wyler.
Yeah.
Goldman.
All right, so now that we have an agreement through, we will swear Lucas in. So why don't you come forward? We'll uh. Want to do it? What am I doing?
You have to do it, mayor. Sorry.
Yep.
Just, you can just read it and you can read it. Just sign the hard copy.
Okay, I'm gonna read this and you repeat it. Um. I'll go to the end here and then you can repeat it. I, Lucas Moore, you solemnly swear. That I will support the Constitution of the United States.
I, Lucas Moore, you solemnly swear, uh, support the Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And the Constitution of the state of Iowa.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
Do the best to my ability.
Do the best my ability.
Discharge all duties as a full-time police officer.
Discharge all duties as a full-time police officer.
For the city of. For the city of West Branch as now or hereafter required by law.
For the city of West Branch as now or hereafter required by law.
Right, congratulations.
I need the hard copies. Sign the hard copy and then I'll get.
I'm gonna sign that. Do it right now.
I'm learning, okay?
Congratulations. Hey, there you go. Be forever in the morning. All right.
Looks like he's dressed for my guy. He's on his way to take.
All right.
All right, we'll move on. Uh, um, resolution twenty-two eighty-seven, believing. Believe in preliminary plat of Heritage Hill. West Branch, Iowa, move to action. Motion please.
Remove.
Second. This was approved by the P and Z. Last Tuesday, I believe. Pretty engineer, um.
No, I don't.
Items that be taken care of?
Yeah, items to be taken care of.
I don't think so.
Well.
Dave's there.
There ain't no discussion. Continue to vote for, uh, preliminary plat of Heritage Hill.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Sexton.
Yes.
Goldman.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yeah.
And next is the final plat, uh, uh, resolution twenty-two dash eighty-eight. Proving the final plat, Heritage Hill, West Branch. Motion please.
Remove.
So we're doing this now because. Financing.
Financing, weather's changing, public gets started.
Yeah, typically, we try and separate preliminary and final, um, but for the purposes of. Interest rates slash financing for this project plus. The timeline that state is going to give the developer. Um, we are asking for both at the same time. On the conditions that there is a team of us, like our engineer, the mayor, someone from planning and zoning. Um, that'll spot check some of the changes, and if there was an error after it's reported. Um, that it would be M M MMS, which is, uh. The developers engineer that would pay to redo the final plat and all the letters and stuff that have to go out. It's in terms of how final plans go, since most of it is private, it is less complicated. Than your subdivision that you would get and normally see. That's why you don't see a hundred different easements. You don't see a hundred different utility, you know, items going through, um. I don't know anything else you wanna add, Dave, but. Um, for sure, there will be an easement for a trail, um, so developer has agreed to put in a trail along that west. West side. And the water main, correct? So then it would loop to that project.
We also asked for the north ten feet of the, uh, area adjacent to College Street. To be dedicated, the city is right away to clean up the right away along college streets. You'll notice there's a lot A shown. And that's what that's for.
Does that make a sixty-six foot wide easement?
Then, or. College Street is sixty foot to the west of that. You can see they have a sixty foot right away shown. So we asked for an extra ten feet there. The city owns on the north side, the old railroad, and then we also purchased from, uh, Hawk Island Company. That old parcel that is adjacent to where they had the building fire for West Branch roofing.
All right, thank you, Dave. Good catch. Um. Any other comments? Final plat? Go ahead, Leslie, please.
Person Sexton.
Yeah.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Dean.
Yes.
Goldman.
Yeah.
Okay, one more on Heritage Hill, uh, twenty, resolution twenty-two dash eighty-nine. Proving a site plan for lot one of Heritage Hill. Uh, motion please.
So move.
Second, Jody. So lot one is everything up Fourth Street and the interior. Doesn't include in the southernmost interior.
Not everything. Doesn't include the Clark Building? That all doesn't include lane? Going along North Fourth as it's beginning.
Right, yeah, yes. Can't see it, so.
It does not include the.
But the four units on, or five on the. On the Clark. Those are not, those are not in this particular.
Those are definitely right here, that's part of the four.
Yeah.
Harson, right. So you're gonna have to forgive me a, forgive me for a little loop, Dave, with the easement. I don't know what that's all about, but I trust him on that. This is it right here. This is part.
Right.
Okay?
Yeah.
Yeah, so it, everything is in there. That is in, that is in. Yeah, Dave is there.
This is everything.
Yeah.
This is everything.
Everything.
This is it. Game on, we're ready.
It's the, still the building permits and all that stuff, but the lot, the site plan goes through.
Okay, so this is just showing the.
Yeah.
Which are still valid.
Okay, yeah, there's.
Adam, could you explain that there's one change on this? It shows a wet pond on the plans, but that's not what is going to be constructed.
Correct, it will not be a wet pond based on a couple of different factors. One is. Uh, engineerically, really not feasible to do so. Um, and so. We were hoping that that would be the case, but as it comes out, uh. Too much dirt work and engineering would be needed. We're not diverting the creek in any direction, so. So that, that should not be a wet pond, in other words, can't be big enough to put. Right. For a short spell, if I don't wanna be a wet pond, but that died.
He is maintaining the, uh, uh, detention basin as part of this.
I did try to donate the maintenance, the detention basin and wet pond.
This is on the other side of the alley.
Yep.
Fourth Street has, uh, a lot of truck traffic. Running out to the, um. Or the P plant out there, whatever it is. And the units. On Fourth Street, we're gonna face onto the street, only the front door. Front door. Okay, I understand there, they won't have to access driveway. Are they gonna have much yard? I'm just thinking that that street isn't particularly safe. I don't like to turn onto it, coming from my place from Green Street, looking down, cause you can't see the bottom. Wait for a semi to show.
Well, it's all part of the big plan. This is what the city was looking for, so this.
I mean, is there some way to reroute? The trucks.
We wish.
For somebody else, somebody else is gonna complain. I'd love to get them out of there.
All right.
And yes, close, close the money into the alley. Damage.
No, sorry, Steve, the, the industrial areas that they're driving to. As of right now are zoned industrial until we rezone it and a property. You know, burns down, then, you know, they're gonna stay industrial. That's just basic.
Forever.
Until probably, for the foreseeable future.
It's been that way.
Yeah, a long time.
All right, uh, we have a motion in a second to approve this site plan. Any other questions, comments? Let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Dean.
Yes.
Goldman.
Yeah.
Sexton.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
All right, resolution twenty-two dash ninety, authorizing the city administrator to formally request a deed from Johnson County. For a portion of Cedar Johnson Road. Motion please.
Move.
Considering we already own this. Oh, technically, we don't. Yeah, we own the ma- so. To annex the property, we, uh, we would, we own the property, then we can annex ourselves. Right now, the, the county's still. At, the county's still, it's still counting right away, even though we, yeah, we. Make whatever seventy said we maintained it, so instead of us just, if we gotta maintain, we might as well have title to it. And then we'd annex it into the city. I think it's the, uh.
Correct, and then that's how he would tip.
Right.
Go to.
Uh, thirty feet. Rest, whatever they're running, whatever the right of way is right now. Oh, I, I'm sure they'd love to do that, trust me. Yeah, they don't usually like to hold on the right of way.
So, how, how far does this go there? Just go all the way to Sydney.
It would go from the roundabout, uh, the Greenview slash Golf Field, Bickford. Yeah.
Go all the way out too, so isn't the rest of this considered the same?
It's to the south. Yeah, like the class B.
Always see limit.
It's up there.
Well, that already is annexed into West Branch because of. The group, the addition.
So maybe. That is part of our.
Maybe we already have that. A small portion.
You're probably talking about.
You're talking north or south?
You're in north.
He was talking north.
So am I.
Yeah.
Well.
That's already. Why wouldn't we go all the way out?
We don't want that yet. And we don't want that.
Yeah, we don't want that dirt road on our.
But the counties.
Where it transferred.
Counties can deal with that.
Keep whatever the gravelish slash steel coat to dirt. Well, it goes.
Until they put the bridge back in.
Yeah, they put a new bridge in.
They do.
We don't want that dirt road.
Not yet. It ends somewhere.
Not until we, like, get a developer on the side of the town.
Okay, so.
Those are the gates that you found out yet? Um, I haven't grasped it, cause I put Bickford Drive in, I'm like, that's not in Seaton County, so that map's not gonna work.
Does it goes out there to the interstate? Or we just stop at the roundabout?
Oh, we'd stop at the roundabout based on that agreement that the nineteen seventies council agreed to. Maintain the road forever for five thousand years.
Yeah.
The corner.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Didn't we determine at one point that that may have been toward the south end of it, not the north end of it? Or was it always for the, I don't know, they ever really say.
They didn't really say, but they don't care, cause nobody.
Wouldn't go to the center of the intersection?
That we would maintain the southern part.
So then they can, yeah, they can maintain that side of the roundabout. And down the gravel road.
Yeah.
All right, we're looking for something.
Ah, just go ahead.
We'll have to see the official documents before.
All right, so we got a, I get a motion, didn't I?
Sexton, Goodweiler.
Yeah. Um, let's go ahead and vote, please.
Councilperson Sexton.
Yes.
Goodweiler.
Yes.
Goldman.
Yeah.
Dean.
Yes.
I just have one follow-up question. How? How agreeable is Johnson County Board of Supervisors to this?
Their attorney asked us to write them to request that. We tried to go through the attorney's office and they told us to write.
They want this resolution to formalize.
So we can.
Our request.
Yeah.
Supervisors. Their attorney asked for. So this puts it one step closer.
Well, that just makes me wonder why. If they're wanting that's done. Is it more of a legal?
I mean, we, we want, we want it done for financing the road project eventually.
We want.
Yeah. Yeah, I don't know why they would care.
Cause now we can tip. We could actually use tip asking to help pay for our portion of it.
Okay.
We can't use the west half because it's not in, it's not in the city. Right. You have to, you're gonna use tip, tax, the grant finance, and it has to be in your city, plus the county, the county's never sent up, but. So by getting title to it, we annex it in ourselves, and then we can use tax increment finance and to do the both sides of the road. That's what we're, that's what our ultimate goal is. Since we're already taking care of it, it doesn't really make any sense to, uh, leave it in the county.
Okay, we're gonna move on. Um, resolution twenty-two dash ninety-one. Authorizing an emergency responder advocacy committee to speak on behalf of the city council. Motion, someone. So this is, uh. Someone. This committee. Who advocate for. Ambulance. Cost share, emergency responder cost share. Which currently is. Kind of, I don't know if it's had a dead end in the county, I don't know where it's at.
So, yeah, I'll give you, I guess, the background and the facts. At least the story can go like this. As we grow in the corridor grows, we have more calls pretty much every month. Um, our volunteers that we have on emergency response is going down. And we're at a pretty critical point figuring out what we need to do. To make sure when somebody calls nine one one, there's somebody. That is within a reasonable response. Um, there has been, we've started paying on call for our night volunteers. For the most part, that is somewhat helped, but there have been times where a nine one one calls had to get diverted to another agency. So what that means is if we deny an ambulance call, it goes to the next. One, and they can deny it or accept it, and it goes to the next, and it goes to the next. Um, my story, I guess, here is. You know, some of you guys know, before I left. Um, basically, I got a call one Sunday morning at seven twenty-six in the morning. I remember the date, Sunday, it was my mayor, Pro Tim. He said. That our mayor died of a heart attack.
This is your mayor in God.
Correct. So. I remember. What it was. I remember what it was like to make those calls with our mayor pro tem and to notify our council members. Uh, granted, he was a little bit older. But. We were running into the same issue in Garner. We did not take it serious enough. I talked to my friends in other states. Same issues. It's a nationwide trend, just like there's less people applying to be police officers. There's less people around to volunteer. And. I think our state leadership tried really hard to provide something that would work. The state law that was passed was going to allow counties to levy. For ambulance services. But that is not working. At all. I think there's only two out of ninety-nine counties that are going to put it on this next upcoming ballot, which is Jones County. And I think whatever county a tumble is, will be. Wapalo. So, those are about the only two counties. Um, in the case of why it's not working in Johnson County, talking to some of the supervisors there. Um, you have eighty percent of their population already gets professional. Services, um, through Corvillo, Iowa City. Um. Not to say it wouldn't pass there, but I don't think it's as big as a priority there as it is in, say, rural Johnson County. Um, Cedar County. It was no different than when I was a grad student and we were doing the community visioning stuff. It's like. Every community in Cedar County is closer to a different city. And we tend to not work together well at all. Um. And that is what's going on, on the Cedar County end. Uh, what I can see is I can see, I wish. Chief Stulman was here, but I see somebody who's tired and burnt. Of having this conversation. I see. Some of his people are likely tired and burnt. Um, what I know is it's gonna affect the city of West Branch one way or another, either by budget or by somebody we know. Is not gonna have somebody get a response as quick as they can, and then it'll be same thing. Someone in this room, their family member or whatnot. Um. I see additional help is needed just to advocate. I don't know if it's gonna go anywhere. I just know. Um. I don't want it to be the same way as we felt in Garner, that we should have done more. Um. And I don't think it should be up to just one person to advocate. I think it should be a couple of us. Helping the fire department and ambulance department advocate. Um, because what's going on right now, I mean, I wish it was working, but it's not, and I'm not hopeful that it's gonna work anytime soon.
So this committee is. We're gonna chat about possible solutions?
I think we would be.
Supervisors.
Correct, supervisors, our state, even our federal, whatever we can that at least eat, keep the noise going. Do you think about it? We've got the third busiest section of the interstate in the state of Iowa. We get no federal funding for assistance. On emergency response, our guys, so I. It's probably not gonna happen tomorrow, but it needs to be a conversation that our elected leaders know about. Um. And I just.
We're at six hundred calls.
Yeah.
And last year, five seventy-five, we got two more to go.
I just know there needs to be assistance one way or another. Um, and I don't want us to be in a situation where we said, I wish we would have could have, could have done more. Um, because it will impact us. So it would be nice to have myself, someone on the council, meet with Kevin, and maybe two of his team members to figure out. Who to chip on if we can to keep the conversation.
Good. See what happens.
It was past.
Um, I get a motion?
Yes, Good Wyler Dean.
Um. Question anyone? Let's go ahead, Leslie.
Councilperson Good Wyler?
Yeah.
Dean?
Yes.
Stulman?
Yes.
Sexton?
Yeah.
That'd be you and me.
So. Morning up. I got put on two committees tonight. That's okay. Sign up.
Okay, uh, let's move on. Uh, Greenview Connection driveway. Do I have a feeling of?
Hmm.
So we would have to extend those asphalt driveways under this.
Or whatever they are. If they're asphalt, then they'd be asphalt.
Oh, asphalt.
Yeah.
And I. And nothing is on ground. Soon.
Right? Still have time. I thought about that last night. I can pour some concrete tomorrow. And if this may not be enough in the budget to do this?
I think we can finalize it, but it's possible we could go over a little bit, and in that case, we'll either have to cut from a current project or a project from next year. Make sure that it's taken care of. Um, I think on Matt's end, it was more of your elephant street patching. So, yes, we probably don't. We're gonna have to sacrifice the project to do it right. Um, we don't do it right. Um, you'll hear about it probably from the neighbors, we might get.
Can I float an idea to see if it sticks? Um. What if we just got rid of?
No, you really did it now.
What if? We'll never get back. Left the driveways where they are, left the street. That goes to the two houses in question. But take out the street. That portion, we do. Just. Take that out. And call it that a little dead end. Um. And we wouldn't have to replace any asphalt. Take out the portion.
On the north, north side of the.
Well, north, west quadrant of the circle.
Hey, Nick. Did you put? That up on the screen, for, please?
In our snow clouds, we just have to make a quick push. We should, to be in there, be done. Sound like a great idea, man. This would disappear with the grass.
Okay.
We wouldn't have to ask all anybody, anything.
Thank you.
Scroll up to the proposal. Or down.
Down.
One more.
There it is.
Oh. Just take this out. Right there. Take that out. Leave this little quadrant. That's it. We wouldn't have to do that asphalt. Be a little smart to me. What do you think?
All in favor, say aye.
We have to do a new address. No, we're not doing new addresses. Wait, yeah.
That's reasonable, I'm interested. Really often it's all the same.
We still have, still getting circle. Let Google go crazy with it. Google Maps. Anybody see what I see there or not?
I, it's a good start. I mean. If that fails, then we gotta do the driveway so slow. I don't know what. It'd be difficult like that.
Couple days worth of work, throwing some black dirt, some seed, we're done.
So then do we go? Grass area too, then?
No, we see if they mow it, if not.
Right.
Where we quit.
Right, I've been mowing it for twenty-five years. The grass area turns into a bigger grass. Where the old road line was.
What?
You know, you'd be a key, but do we have to extend it more?
Instead of mowing that, we'd be mowing this weird, like, growing.
City would mow it?
I'm not saying that's what I want.
Well, homeowner would probably not say it.
Give it to them.
Yeah, if you don't give it to them, they don't have.
I don't think we give it to them. We just say, hey, here's, here's a bigger yard for you.
Why don't we? Why wouldn't it be, you just need it over?
Well, I'm gonna make. We gotta make sure it, it works first before we do that, but.
You wanna jump in and what you're seeing in Marvlin? Here?
What's lovely?
Well, my question is, if you take this part out. And how does this person compare to you then? Do we?
Uses the old.
Yeah, I use a spur.
They, they, they come up here.
That becomes a simple driveway for them.
So they have, they, they come out here and go over here. So then.
Yeah.
Who maintains this? Because that's what we talked about last week, so.
We would maintain it.
Yeah, that's.
The city. We can plow it, we could shove snow and.
You're going to come down here and then go here?
Are you gonna come from the south?
If you're gonna get rid of this, this is not gonna be grass, right?
Yep.
So you're gonna.
I'd do it if I was coming from the south.
Coming from the south.
When you come down there, then you're gonna.
Pushing snow.
Pushing off, on the ground.
Yeah.
And they're still gonna come this way.
Yeah. We don't have the asphalt in anybody's driveway.
It's gonna be a big pain, man.
A good place for a tornado song.
I, I. Where you?
All right, um. That's my proposal.
Oh, that's crazy. I'm not agreeing with that.
I don't think you're, I don't think you.
Right, didn't hate that. We're not doing anything to any driveway. And we're only eliminating that button. Round of it.
Yeah.
So what's green there in that part of the purple filthy green?
I was looking at them. I, yeah, I, this, I'm.
Good.
That was confusing, I.
That a directive we wanna give Matt to do?
All in favor?
Again.
All right.
Um.
No consent.
Yeah.
All right, that's a consensus to. Do, does that make sense?
All right.
Technically, they own part of that road anyway.
They do.
Little triangle of it.
Okay, um, city administrator report.
Great, um, yeah. Iowa League of Cities was actually pretty good, um, out at Waterloo. Uh, most of the workshops were good. Civility becomes, is still a main topic. What's going on between public councils internally, between staff? Um, and I don't know if we foresee that trend getting any better. Um, as we see people get a little bit more polarized, we're seeing that hit us. At the local level too. Luckily, we don't have that much here. Um, but. Um, you'll kind of hear me from time to time, you know, go back to our rules of conduct. Not that there's anything wrong, it's just when somebody gets replaced by you, chances are they're gonna be more polarized than you guys. Um. Another couple things that I learned that were pretty good, um, I'll need to talk with Kevin a little bit more on fire department volunteer stuff. Um, just on the HR side, you and I will need to talk about. Um, and then it was nice to learn what other communities are doing in terms of work orders, building permits. As we become busier and busier, um, in our revenue. Stays about the same due to the new tax, um, rules by the state. We have to find a way to become more efficient. Uh, we need to probably start thinking about. How solar can help us in our utility payments in the future, because right now we budgeted a twenty-five percent increase from last year to this year, and there's a decent chance we will go over that amount. This year on utilities.
Utility?
Yeah.
So.
Time run.
So. So. But overall, it's pretty good. Roger can tell you more about some of the other mayors he met, but there are a lot of other communities that are in way worse. We're talking about fences, they're talking about. You know, paying for energy or food, or they're talking about, they don't have ener-, you know, they don't have broadband.
They don't have industry moving to town because they don't have broadband. I thought that's what our governor. I mean, that's.
I thought they were responding out there.
There are some, but. Uh, Charles City is the big one where they've got some, but since it's. It's so outdated and based on their size, they're not qualifying for whatever program. So, and they're not the only one, even like, say, Red Oak and other places.
Yeah, those, those cities are doing it, but, but the rural has broadband, but then not the city itself, because. The local phone company or whoever runs it just isn't doing it. I don't know why, but. It couldn't be that cost effective, but. Anyway, made me feel pretty good about ourselves.
Roger, I would actually like to tie in on that. Well, I just covered in one of my most recent developments in Corvo, was that the highway tilting board. Has made it so that it is not required to have telephone service and/or, yeah, internet service. And the thing that I have gone through recently, and Kevin has also seen some little things come through. Um, in the Summit Hill District, uh, where I just built, there were forty houses that had been completed there. I had to fight very hard to get I'm on. To use the media comment, couldn't seem to find time to get to it, and put in the infrastructure for. Um, internet, and then when it came time for centrally linked to provide nine one one service to a property that I assigned my own name to, so I could try to first progress. Um, I got a voice over telephone call message saying that the developer, which is me. Um, had elected to not financially contribute to centrally linked to have infrastructure put in, which is bull, because I was never approached to do that. So a lot of these towns are suffering like that. Um, yeah, it's just, uh, the utility board. It's not required anymore.
Well. But the gas lobby makes us put gas lines in. Oklahoma gas lobby got real strong. Have to put a gas line.
We're very blessed. In our view, to have. A rough real internet service. Um, okay, anything else, Ellen? Kevin?
I talked to the chief judge in Devon for today, so we're filing the application tomorrow.
Ask him.
Yes. Okay.
You can talk about hills. Okay.
Oh, yes, um, so we, uh, I did file the petition for two oh three Green Street. And Hillbank did another mortgage on the property, so they are interested in actually, and they believe they have a buyer to take that property over and re-camp that property, so. Since we, I filed the, I filed our petition like a week before they were gonna file there, so. Um, hopefully working with them, so they will end up needing the property and that.
Usually it started for closing.
I, I filed my petition first, so when they did their final title search to find, before they filed their foreclosure action, they found out that we filed something for them, so. So we're gonna work with them hopefully and get this all, get the title into somebody else's name, and then they will be re-camping.
What do we have to do in that regard?
I'm gonna keep my application.
Take care of it.
I'm gonna keep my application on file and then. Until they get their ducks in a row, because I don't wanna. My sixty days is ticking, so I'm gonna keep it on, keep it there. What, which means that.
That could take a couple of months.
Well, foreclosures take a while, so, but I think if they're gonna, I'm gonna talk to them this week and see if they can start. There's a way, when you get a foreclosure action, you can get a receiver. There's a way, when you get a foreclosure action, you can get a receiver appointed, so that they can start taking care of the property, so it doesn't get any worse. Cause they, well, but they, they, uh. The attorneys in Des Moines and, uh, I went over and she wanted to know if there are any holes in the ripper that walls, and I said, well, the tie deck's been. You know, some of the boards and. Uh. I've been, it was since two thousand twelve, I'm not sure they changed much. So the elements obviously have done the roof and the outside of the house are interior. So hopefully that will, uh, get some progress on that. And it won't be our problem and. Even better. Um. That it?
Um, Dave, do you have anything to report?
Not really much new. We've continued to work on the wastewater plants. Um, I think they're getting closer to the point where they can get that, um. First cell piped up, uh, we've run into a couple of snags, we're working through those. As far as some piping fittings and continue to work through a number of issues on supply chain. Uh, looking at substitutions, try to keep things on schedule and whatnot, but. Project is moving along pretty well. Weather's been very cooperative and, um, that's kind of the summary on the wastewater plant. As far as, um, the roundabout project, we had a pretty good meeting the other day. Uh, we're looking at potentially taking some of that excess material. And using it in the part six meadows. And that hasn't come to us for a plat yet, but there's a preliminary concept, and what we're attempting to do is fill in the low spot near that creek with some of that material now. So that once it gets planted, we don't have to go back and impact the yards or get easements from those future property owners. So we're trying to, um, make use of that material, uh, anything, um, excess that doesn't get wasted there. We have a need for on Orange Street as it crosses the creek in that phase. And then we also have, um, some discussion with the potential developer on part three A. They would use some material as well, so I think that has worked its way out pretty well. We have easements that we've discussed and property acquisition on that northeast corner. And, uh, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have a plat that we can present to them and try to get that resolved. So. That's moving along, plan to bid that this winter yet, uh, before the end of the year in discussions with the county. We had a pretty good meeting with utilities last week. And as soon as we get the right away acquisition completed, which we're hoping is the second week in October, the utilities will start their relocations.
In this fall yet, you mean?
Yeah.
Alright, thank you, Dave.
Dave, can you repeat that? Did you say we're bidding in the winter? Cause I thought we were bidding in like the next three weeks.
I thought we were supposed to bid in June.
With the, uh, right away in utility issues, um, somewhat, um. Unresolved, they didn't want to bid until we had that done.
Who was that, Johnson County?
Yes.
By this winter, do you mean before the end of this year or January, February?
No, we're looking at having it done before the end of the year, so either late November or early December bid date.
Do whatever you can to push them, Dave, cause that's gonna affect possibly interest rates on our bonds, so you're talking saving the city lots of money. If you can get that moved forward.
Okay.
I know you can only do so much.
Thank you, Dave. City staff, anyone? That's the nothing, okay. Tom, Thomas, mayor and council, I cannot think of anything I want to say. All in favor, say aye.